Hallelujah! Yes, and we are praying. May Jesus come to us. To our faith. Oh, he is coming to us. He is here. And he is with us. He is coming to us. Oh, may Jesus come to us. Oh, he is coming to us. He is here. He is coming to us. Oh, may Jesus come to us. Oh, he is coming to us. He is here. And he is with us. He is coming to us. Let us pray. May Jesus come to us. Oh, he is coming to us. He is here. And he is with us. He is coming to us. Hallelujah! Yes, and we are praying.
Amen.
Welcome to the joy of the Lord Jesus Christ.
Amen.
We really appreciate the Lord.
Amen.
But he has given us this time to come to the house of prayer.
Amen.
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 Lord, we are praying. We pray that you will be with each of us.
Amen.
And that your grandness, our heart is desired. Brother Zipa, can you do what I told you to do? Brother Zipa, can you do what I told you to do about this place? Did you listen to instructing me? Can you do it? Child, I'm going there. That's for you to do. Amen. We want to appreciate the Lord. Let us go.
Amen.
Come on, brother. We want to appreciate the Lord. Let us go. Father, we are praying. To Lord, we are praying. To Lord, we are praying. We are praying. Father, we are praying. To Lord, we are praying. We are praying. We are praying. We are praying. All the way, right up to this place. We pray for you, Lord, that you remind you, that you follow accordingly. That you use it mightly for the benefit of this Lord or church in our world. We commit the service, Lord, as we start into your blessed hands. Bless us, Lord, and come and speak to us in a special way. We thank you in the wonderful name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
I don't want to take much time, but just a little announcement here. Let's do the best that we can to the mission. Gratitude, gratitude, and thank you. This is what we announce. This is who we are. So we are grateful to each other. We are grateful. We are grateful. Let's catch the time. We are grateful. We are grateful. We are grateful. I am very excited with the first sex. We are grateful. But the first sex is not exclusive. I am not a professor. I am not a professor. And this is from my wife. I would like to thank the Lord for granting me yet another year into my life. A few months. A few months. A few months. Since I could not make it this far. And before we go, we have to say something. Brother Lord, carry me. I am singing. I am singing. Lord, be the glory. Amen. She is a better today. She is a better today. Amen. Thank you for your mercy. Good evening. Amen. I am grateful. I am grateful. That's a long life. Amen. It's my joy tonight, Brother Joshua, to give us four parts. So it's my joy tonight. And to welcome into this house of the Lord. We have brother and sister. The name is leading me again. Brother, can you help? The brother of friends. Yes, brother, since I am a book. All the way to him. Because I think this is our side. Amen. And also it's our joy to welcome Sister Ma Said and the family. I know Sister Rachel. Yes, the brother one, I can't think. We can't cheer. Sister Ma Said, who is such. Or Sister Rachel and Sister Ruth. These are others. He is there. And all of them. Sister Rachel. And the boys where are?
The boy is there. He is outside.
He is younger than Sister Rachel.
He is younger than.
He is younger than Sister Ruth. So that Sister Rachel, she doing medicine. That's a doctor, this one. And Sister Ruth and Sister Ma Said. They are all doing medicine. Oh, great. There's the two doctors. You know, thank you. Amen. And lastly, but not least. It's my honor. Humble honor to welcome and invite Sister Ma Said. We can cheer. We can cheer. Brother, brother. Brother, brother. So I will not tell you more about him. He is a good man. But I will just tell you about him for one. One sermon that he preached at Highland. He just ended talking about him for one. He was typing these guys in the whole Israel. And they said, this one guy was kind of like the captain. I want to welcome all the visitors that are here. Can you raise your hands? Brother, sister, brother, can you stand micros? Somebody to come cheer. Oh, maybe my wife. All of this, as you can stand in the word of the Lord. In the name of the Lord Jesus Christ. And so he said, this one would say, here for one, come and futureize. That is the gate. But here for one, come and futureize. This gate of whatever need that you have. And that was such a wonderful thing. They enjoyed it. They really goes into the book of Daniel. That time he was preaching about in the days of these kings. God was set up a kingdom. He went on and we got lost in the spirit. And we don't know what the Lord has installed for us. But in the days of these kings. Surely God will set up a kingdom. Father, we welcome you. Come and take the labor of the state. We preach not the spirit. Whatever the Lord has given you to come, he gave us. They have labored to do so. Let us welcome him. Let us welcome him. Come.
Taora, taora, he is here. Taora. Taora, oh, taora. He is here. Taora. He is here. Taora. Nuno, yo, ma, no. He is here. Taora. Nuno, yo, ma, no. I love to greet everyone of you tonight. In the name of the Lord Jesus Christ. Certainly happy to be in Nauton. It's been long. Actually desired to be in this place. Because Pastor Chikamasa is a good friend of ours. Comes from home. And I would always think, I would want to see what he does and what is happening. Would to see the adverts, would to see the work being done and all. Would be seeing the beautiful structure that is here. So all along, I almost desired to come. God bless you, pastor. Certainly happy to be here. Brother, sister, God bless you. These are all people from home. So you feel comforted, yeah, at home, of course. God bless you. I, for a while, when they had invited me, I was thinking I was coming to preach from Saturday. So I was a little bit relaxed. I phoned or he phoned, I don't know who phoned. I was advised, you. I actually clashed the dates with banked. And the pastor was told by you cannot do that. He's coming here. Right, so I think, I think I was a maybe of the other time. And he was influential. He sold me. He sold me there so that I can also be there. Yet to guide me to say, I am a traveler. He said, this way, you're going this way, you're going this way. So you know, he's good to me. Tonight. Hallelujah! I just came in from the car to the pub. It has happened to me several times. Sometimes you really want some little time to relax a little bit. And you find yourself, you are just coming from this way into the other place. I don't forget this other time. I dropped from the plane and got rushed into the pub. I was preaching. I finished preaching. They were telling me, looking quiet. And I had to be taken to the airport sweating. And I walked into the plane. Just like that, that was in law. Then this other time in Zambia. Just dropped from the airport. I to the pub. The hand down on the car. They exchanged me with pastor. Pastor had to take the service that was supposed to be mine. To take his service. And imagine how hard it is to take his service. So I walked into church. Just as quick as I was. As I was walking in, the pastor was saying, yeah, the boy will come and finish my service. And he was asking the people to stand. You can imagine how it is. So I just, the pastor has come from the pub. I am going up the pub. The last day, the red day. I finished on the pub. Sweating. The pastor had to come to exchange me. And say, move away from the pub. Your time for the plane is right now. Walked out, sweating again, that was another time. I walked into the aeroplane. Fortunately, he not to change where I was putting on. God bless you. Are you happy to be here? Praise the name of the Lord. Hallelujah! I'm happy to be here. For sure, even if I don't be able to preach tonight. God will help me maybe to preach tomorrow. Hallelujah! Can you say amen? Praise the Lord. Hallelujah! Praise the name of the Lord. Hallelujah! Thank you, Jesus. So I am asking you to stand. Take our Bible. And open two portions of the Bible. I hope you do like out well. I would want to open Acts chapter one. On a very common scripture. Verse one. Sorry, verse eight. A very common scripture. Then I would love to read Revelation seven. On verse one, maybe two, three. Amen. Praise the Lord. Before we read, let's raise our hands and pray. Maybe you are there who is sick. God heals the sick. Maybe you are there. But it desire in God to intervene in something. God intervenes. Maybe you are there. Who wants another touch of the Holy Ghost. God is still feeling people. With the Holy Spirit. Maybe you are there. Someone that need joy. The Bible says, the joy is in the Lord. Again, I say, the joy is. God can do it for you to. God is more than ever. To give you a heart is desire. As we take these common scriptures. The word that can never change. Which is the same yesterday. Same today. The same forever. The same God. That healed in the wilderness. Can heal today. The same God. That kept their shoes. All the way from Egypt to Canada. Forty years. The same God. Says, I am the same. Yesterday. Today. And forever. He can do it for you. With your hands raised. You don't share your glory with anyone. We will be careful when you have done everything on the own to give me the glory and the honor. That your people look what again. Help me, oh Lord. As I stand in this sacred place. Father, in this holy place. Father, we pray in the mighty name of Jesus Christ. Lord, we pray, believing. Amen. Praise the Lord. Amen. Let's read Acts chapter one, verse eight. All right. All right, all right. Maybe I'll also read this night. The Lord Jesus Christ. Jesus Christ. One of his last words, as he. Was about to leave. After rising from the dead. On birthday, he says. But you shall receive power. After that, the Holy Ghost is come upon you. And you shall be witnesses. Unto me. Both in Jerusalem. And in all Judea. And in Samaria. And unto the utmost part of the earth. And we, when he had spoken these things. While in the hell. He was taken up. And a cloud received him. Let's go to Revelation. Revelation seven. Yes, Revelation seven. Allow me to read verse one, two, three. And after, and after these things, I saw four angels standing on the four corners of the earth. Holding the four winds of the earth. That the wind should not blow on the earth, nor on the sea, nor on any tree. And I saw another angel ascending from the east, having the seal of the living God. And he cried with a loud voice to the four angels, to whom it was given to hear the earth and the sea. Saying, hear not the earth, neither the sea, nor the trees. Till we have sealed the servants of our God in their foreheads. Praise the Lord. May the good Lord bless the reading of his word. And the church shall say, amen. As you may be seated. Praise the Lord. We, tonight. Would love to take a bit of. Hallelujah! I don't know how I'm going to title this. But maybe I would just take the pot home with the four winds. That's what I shall take. As a little, as a main thought. And a little thought in between. But I read in Acts that he shall see the power. Hallelujah! So think about those things as I talk. Hold the four winds. Hallelujah! Praise the name of the Lord. I want to take long. I am a little bit tired. I've tried these days to preach short. Because I am old. You really feel you are old. And you also feel sometimes you are so wet. And you try to show them what you are trying to do. To keep a little bit of strength. For, for another day. The pastor said, you are taking home another service, every morning, another service every evening, another service from Sunday morning. Maybe another service in the afternoon. I said, I will be there, ladies and gentlemen. Hallelujah! Praise the name of the Lord. Hold the four winds. It's my little thought. It's my thought tonight. Hallelujah, the main thought tonight. Hallelujah! Maybe the Lord willing. Those thoughts will read during the other meetings. Hallelujah, hold the four winds. Hallelujah! Praise the name of the Lord. Hold the four winds. Are you happy to be here today? Hallelujah! Hallelujah, hold the four winds. Hallelujah! Not on, not on. Not on, not on. Hold the four winds. Hallelujah, hold the four winds. Praise the name of the Lord. We are in the end time. We are in the end time. We are in the days of the promise. The days that we were taught. There will be wars. And rumors of war. Praise the name of the Lord. There will be diseases. Hallelujah, there will be sicknesses. There will be confusion. Under the sun. Hallelujah, right at the end. Praise the name of the Lord. Are you here? Right at the end. Those things, negativity. A lot of negativity. In the end time. A lot of negativity. Praise the name of the Lord. Prophecy. Prophecy. Cannot mention. It will be there. A lot of negativity. Praise the name of the Lord. But I'm so happy. That in such a time. In such an hour. It is so negative. Where it's not. Bright old dark. Hallelujah! It tells me there are shining lights in the last evening. It won't be dark, it won't be, it won't be, it won't be bright. It's a very precarious time. A time of negativity. But I am happy. All the same. There will be a lot of the time to live in that time. That we will be living in that time. You are the person to live in that time. Eh, 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 the end time. Is the west. Is the west time. But he says. If I was going to be asked. Which time? What do you have left to live? He said, it is this time. This is the time I wanted to live. Somebody say amen. This is the time. That you should have come. And you are here. You didn't choose. I hope they encourage you. You better love the time. You better love the time. God predestinated you. To the west of the time. Hallelujah, the west of the time. But I don't think God. Give the west to the west. I think he gives the west to the best. Hallelujah, in the west time. He will give the west prayer. Hallelujah, he will bring in the best. With the west. To meet with the west. Hallelujah, you get your best. To meet with the end time condition. Somebody say amen. To meet with the end time. You are standing here. Or you are sitting here. Or you walked here. To meet the end time. You are the person. You are the person. To meet the end time condition. It was you. Somebody say amen. It was not most. It was you. Somebody say amen. It was not Joshua. It was you. To meet the end time condition. To meet the end time condition. Somebody say amen. And the scripture that we read. He said, hallelujah. I, I, I love what I read. Hallelujah, and after these things. Hallelujah, it means there were things happening before. After those things. I saw four angels. Hallelujah. Standing on the four corners of the earth. On the four cardinal point. Hallelujah, in every direction. So I want to say to you. Don't be afraid. Don't be confused. When problems. Come from every direction. That's exactly in the scripture. They will come from every direction. Hallelujah, from four corners. From the four cardinal point. Get confused. I had a problem coming from here. Now today it's here. Now, now tomorrow, I think it will be there. It's exactly in the scripture. The angel is, is standing on the four corners. Standing on the four corners of the earth. Holding the four winds. Of the earth. That the wind should not blow. On the earth. Nor on the sea. Nor on earth. Now it looks like. It looks like. These four angels. Didn't want the wind to blow. But I want you to see something coming. Let's watch it, everyone. And I saw another angel. The Bible is showing me. That there were four angels. Holding the four winds. Is that right? The four winds had to blow off. Hallelujah, on the earth. But these four angels were holding. Let's, let's watch it. And, and I saw another. Which is a different angel. Now the four angels. Are not like this other angel. And I saw. Eh, another angel. Ascending from the east. Having the seal of the living God. I will get time to get there. And he cried. With a loud voice. To the four angels. Are you seeing what is happening? To whom it was given. The earth recklessly. So the four angels are. Were supposed. To unleash. The four winds. But we really like, they didn't want. But actually their business. Was to unleash the four winds. Me po tachoi toto, who did sue it? The winds to come. Hallelujah. It was not them. It was an angel. Which arose from the east. To all the four winds. Somebody say amen. It was an angel. And I believe. The same angel. Could be standing right here in the seat. I have no doubts about. We are living in the days of angels. We are living in the days of our angels. I believe in the name of Jesus. Angels standing right here. Angels standing right here. I believe angels are standing right here. I believe angels are standing right here. I believe angels are standing right here. And he spoke. And he cried. With a loud voice. It was a cry. It was not as a teaching. It was a cry. It was not as a teaching. It was not as an explanation. It was a cry. It was a minisflection. It was a cry. To the four angels. And say to the four angels. To whom it was given. Whoever entered the sea. Say to them. It's not. The earth and the sea. No, any tree. Hallelujah, see. I believe that. Stop it. The program. Program. Come on, are you here? Stop it. The program. Program. Sanga sakato roba na program. Program ya chre ya akato miya sakato. Somebody say amen. Somebody say amen. Put on a program. Somebody say amen. Hallelujah, somebody say amen. I speak in the name of the Lord. Hallelujah. 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 It's not. The earth. Neither the sea. You can put your name there. You can put your name there. Kana ule bana ule uro uza pidiwe. Kana ule chexia uro udi pidiwe. Kana ule kenyu. I speak in the name of the Lord Jesus. Saying it's not. The earth. Neither the sea. Put your name there. It's a basara koli pabu. It's a basara koli pabu. It's a basara koli pabu. It's a situation they are koli pabu. It's a posu koli pabu. It's a mayla koli pabu. It's a maya koli pabu. I speak in the name of the Lord Jesus. Yes, sister. Yes, sister. Hallelujah. Hallelujah. I'm not chicken. Don't be afraid. Hallelujah. I'm not chicken. That's chicken. Hallelujah, we like sisters that are chicken. Hallelujah. Ya itwa na John Ryan mta na kwe te bof. Tino swa John Ryan bofka. Kue ma newspaper, ah, ah. John Ryan mta. The preacher. Why we are ayitwa any days? Achuya kuno parita. Saka etaka parita parita. Of artisa. Kana John Ryan ari parita. Saka isu manja John Ryan kuno chicken. Koto kera uen na mbe parita. So I gashita kaka wanda iso. Isikina brana maso. Ya brana brana, nae brana John Ryan. Chi, chi no playtime. What's the problem? What's more your money di kenju? What matter what's okay? But I am a brother brana. But chi no itika mandi. Di no itika nanda. Di no itika nanda, parita parita. No swa muge simba la upe. Asin ni di no sozi, bili muri kuma shu. Uleke muri kunama. Kuchi ni naba tiya. Saka mandi no uya paria. Di no cha cha pati ra. What's what's a class? Cha cha. Cha cha pati ra. Cha 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 cha. Sukale choga sakoa de kalapas. Kama kalapasimo suwe. Hallelujah, cha cha pati ra. Asin di manwa, no ra wala ma pati ra. Kwe te sakana pati ra. Ki kuda walo e faita. I like it. Nota mea ino kurra isha boche. Nota mea ino buche isha amen. Mea ino buche isha hallelujah. Mea ino buche isha praise God. Mea ino buche isha sita. Mea ino bane so. Kumo wa niwe utara ane fifty. Ane fifty six. I'm fifty six years old. Asin di chi no towa ni sahwa so. Ni siwa kana kana. Kana mugo swa chi no di netsa. Kana mugo swa chi no di netsa. Chi no ita uwa ne. Ni nae kura mwa kando ita. Somebody say amen with your head. Hallelujah, somebody say amen. Saka kana onzo uwa ra suenela. Ayu na kune na prayer line. Cha chiwa pati. Unu towa ra chi no to itika isu. Kwe te chi no to itika keno sakana. Saka sepa iro, lay your hands. Lay your hands on the seat. Let it slowly come. Brana moja, I'm so happy. I love this old fashioned. Full fold. Let up this handshake. Not this kind of. Somebody say amen. Somebody say amen. Eh, yemo loka kuti rasi. Home the four winds. In the mighty name of Jesus. Hallelujah. Home the four winds. Hallelujah, this one. This one. La karai riwa. Kumu kona kuma ta mepo. Urisa mepo. Ma ta mepo tachu. Amen. Kuti mepo ningai bata se.
How can I hope the wind?
Ningai bata se.
How can I hope?
Oh, happy birthday. We hope they were in the harbor. Had we one hundred and twenty. In one mind. In one accord. And there came a sound. Like a mighty rushing wind. And filled the house. Ya gei bucha kani. Ya gei bucha kawa rumera. Ne matchwayana bata mepo. Can it change? Ya gei bucha kawa bata mepo. Di da matchwa mepo yoi. Di da ita sema clove and touch of fire. Then come the horn of the four winds. The wind from heaven. The wind from heaven. Come by the hundred and twentys. Makana muto riwa, ano bata mepo. Ayu na kune kama na kune mepo se kumu shabenu. Niwe anse mepo se kumu shabenu. Kana mepo se kama initi. Niwe anse mepo se kama initi. Kana mepo, kana mepo, saka kaka niwa. Niwe unu bata mepo yoi. Kaka niwa ma mepo. Isuana ma ta ma mepo. Isuana ma ta ma mepo. Di no bucho xukena sana di no bucho. Saka na ya amen. Di no bucho ma ta ma mepo. And mepo tachu tijori program. Mepo tachu tijori program. Kada mura di no ya tiki re mepo ya ke. Kana uwa no. Tiki re mepo ya ke kana uwa. Ta iwa. I na na precha. I na na precha. Kana ma ta mepo, ma ta mepo, ma ta mepo. Uike niro ma ta mepo. Somebody say amen. Kana pane choma oru shui ra ka. Chi no kamo china sonyo. Kana ma ta mepo itozo. I speak in the name of Jesus. Sister. In the name of Jesus. Kamo china egi no samurku cha. Kamo china egi samurku shui ra. Kamo china egi samurku cha. Ma ta mepo yoi. Ma ta mepo yoi. Ma ta mepo. Audi we da wama svaba. Muro bata niwe mepo. Audi bundiro, audi ndire wama svaba. Audi fasarina, audi kuka. Muro bata niwe mepo. Anytime believer. Anytime solution. Anytime believer. With anytime solution. Hallelujah. Hallelujah. Stop it. Programmed. Programmed. Can I repeat what I'm saying? Stop it. Programmed. Now can I add? And say, stop it. Scripture. Programmed. Programmed. You're a bad man, eh. You're a bad man, eh. You're a good, stop it. Scripture. Programmed. What a robot, eh. The boom, eh. And the money, eh. Like a, eh, eh, eh. You're a bad man, eh. Is that right? You're a bad man, eh. And we are here, brother. But, eh, eh, because within the situation. Within the puzzle. Within that situation. Of destroying the world. Within the puzzle. Of Vladimir Putin. Destroying the world. Russia, the king of the north. Destroying the world. Within the program. Within the task. There was you. Hallelujah, to the living. Within the puzzle. Of destroying the world. Bad man, eh. There was you. You're a bad man, eh. 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 They're atomic. You're a bad man, eh. You're a bad man, eh. I am, I am, I am a paradox. I am a paradox in this age. The program. Program. You're a bad man, eh. 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 The situation, eh. I want to tell the devil. Because the believer is still there in, 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 in nature. The believer is still there in nature. I want to tell Vladimir Putin. That the believers are still here in the world. The message, eh, eh, eh. That is, eh, eh, eh. So I pray. Hallelujah, to the heaven. That's why there was an angel. That arose from the east. And cried with a loud voice. And challenged the four angels. And prayed, hold your program. Hands with the steel. Hey, sah, hallelujah.